We're here for the delay and I'm not talking about you having to wait for us as we prepare for executive business at this time. I recall the meeting of the South East School Board back to order and would like us to stand for the pledge. Mr. Schreiber, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, we do declare that we wish to stand one nation under God in the name of this law, liberty, and justice.
Scott's time, don't go. I have 1.07 minutes of the June 19th, 2018 meeting. Table of Minutes at this time. Superintendent comments?
We're delayed enough, so I'll forget those at this time.
Thank you for that. Public participation on action items only. For details, the items were posted online and please come to the podium to state your name and your affiliation with the district. And if you could add three minutes. We're going to need the time counter, so if you can take this off just a minute, please. Who would like to be the timekeeper?
I would be the chair.
Thank you. Any public participation? Action items. I don't see any public participation, so we will close that segment. Now we have action items, starting with 2.01 up to 2.28. Does anyone want to pull any items for discussion? 2.01 up to 2.28. Any discussion?
Yeah, see, um...
You may use your mic.
I'm sorry.
That's quite an old part of the way I show up somewhere. Um, I do have a course discussion. The newest agenda item that was added, the two agenda items that were added.
The items were added this afternoon. 2021, 203, we will pull those items for discussion. Any other items for discussions? So, I would like a motion for consent agenda to adopt the other items, starting with 2.01 up to 2.28 excluding 2.02 and 2.03. Do I have a motion? Mr. Curran? Any second?
Second.
Mr. Schaffier? All those in favor of 2.01 to 2.28 excluding 2.02 and 2.03? I know you do it differently. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Unanimous. Thank you. Need a motion to adopt 2.02 and do you want to discuss them together? Since they're related? Oh, okay. Motion to adopt 2.02 and 2.03 as such. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Curran, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McHensy? Any discussion?
Um, I want to discuss the matter of hiring a...
Can you speak up, please?
Where the hell from? Now they're very loud. First you weren't working, now they're certainly. Uh, I wanted to discuss the matter about hiring the assistant superintendent of HR and keeping it open for outside and inside, uh, people to apply to the job. So then, you know, we don't have somebody in there already and then it keeps it open and then you come in and apply and see that the job is really open and nobody existing is in that, then see the red.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes. Basically, the position of human resources is one of the most important ones in the entire district. They really deal with the entire district, all of the employees and so forth. And really what you have to look for is someone who has that experience, they have knowledge, and I think it's an opportunity where we can, you know, put out a paper to look for the person who could do the best job possible with experience and training in that area rather than going to an interim for a month or two and, you know, get someone who will be here for a while and hopefully will stay because it's such an excellent district.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I agree with my board members, but I also think that it's a position, because of its importance, that you need to have someone at the helm. And obviously, the person who we have here is Dr. Lloyd. For anyone who knows Dr. Lloyd, he's extremely bright, he has the energy, he has the knowledge of this district, and I believe that for the interim position, he would be the person to step in and to at least be at the helm. There are going to be questions that is going to be asked and he may not know the answer and he'll be very forthright and he'll say to people, "I don't know the answer, but I will find out the answer." And there are plenty of people within the county who he can counsel down. There are plenty of other directors of personnel, assistant superintendents in charge of personnel and in charge of HR that he can speak to and make a phone call to and can find out some answers and then can get back to whoever is asking him the question. And I think to leave it open is a huge mistake. And I know that there was some concern that if there's an interim person in there, that someone from outside the district may feel that that person has the inside track. And that might be the case or it might not be the case. Dr. Lloyd might feel after being there for six weeks, eight weeks, whatever it is, may say, "You know what? I'm not cut out for this. I'm a chosen advocate and here I am in the HR office and I feel like I'm missing out on something." And he may feel that he wants to go back to his pillar. Or he may feel that this is outstanding, this is the best thing since sliced bread. And if he thinks that, what power do we have? But I would tell you that to leave it vacant and not to have someone in charge of that particular piece and to do the best job that he possibly can, I think is a major mistake.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schaffier. I'd like to remind my colleagues that we can only discuss publicly the broad lines of the position and appointment without specific individuals. So, that was discussed in executive session because it's personnel related and there are personnel movements being proposed. What we can discuss here is the principle and the concept.
It's right here.
Understandable, but, I mean, I truly appreciate you supporting a particular individual and that has been clear in our conversation prior. We need to focus our conversation in public on the principle of making an interim appointment or not, waiting for a permanent appointment, how the position is being posted actually. So, if you could do that.
I agree with Mr. Schaffier. I think it is a tremendous mistake to leave this position vacant. We will be posting internally and externally, so there would be certainly opportunities for candidates to apply to be considered for this position. The understanding is that Dr. Lloyd understands this is a neutral position as well. And if we hypothetically were to go outside, we could be looking at a vacancy until the point when somebody might step into that role of two and a half months. I am certainly uncomfortable leaving the HR office vacant within a year for two and a half months, especially considering how busy that office will be for the next four and a half months. It's just not a risk I'm personally willing to take. So, I am certainly advocating that we approve this interim position tonight.
By me?
Mr. Dowling?
I agree that this is a critical position, that mandates it to be filled. I think the candidate that's recommended will do a fine job. I think it's upon the behooves to support him in every asset of the job. And I recommend that this position be filled tonight.
Any further comments?
I have a comment. I respectfully disagree with those last three comments. It is in no way a reflection on the personnel that was discussed earlier. It is a position that, in my opinion, doesn't need to be filled at this point. I think it sends a bad message to the public that are applying from the outside. The position can be filled by somebody with HR experience that doesn't have to give notice to their job within a school district of 30-day notice. There's several different reasons why this can be handled quicker than the six months or the two months, whatever. You're saying that it is, it should be, it can be handled relatively quickly if he's vetted through the process quickly. That's it.
Okay. I guess I'll take the turn and then we can see what we need to do further on this. My comments are actually questions because I sent some questions by email, so perhaps I'm not sure if I would be solid because I don't know if you replied. I didn't see her response. So, first of all, internally, the idea of an interim until a permanent appointment is made. I wanted to know how it was posted internally to our administration.
Due to what I think is a kind of an emergency situation here, the HR office cannot have any staffing as of Thursday, July 19th. And so, whenever we started last week, several people had reached out to me expressing interest. I met with them, I followed up with them, and I think that there are qualified administrators that could step in. Do they have the HR experience? No. And most people in education don't. There's not like a separate certification for that. But I think that the individuals, the number of individuals can step in and fill the position, provide leadership there, do some hiring because there are two or three people in that office as well. And so, I think we would be in much shape. Was there a formal posting internally? No.
So, there was no official posting to our internal administration?
Correct.
And I would assume that would give a fair opportunity for all our administrators to apply for this interim position if had we posted it? Once we do all our resignation and opening and also in order to receive all those interested parties that are just attending?
Sure, except for the one that's in dilly right now.
So, there's no posting internally or is it basically a word of sound?
Yeah, the email that Mr. Walker sent out announcing his resignation went to all administrators, all teachers, all staff.
Did I mention in it that there would be an interim hire?
No.
So, then we discussed posting this externally and internally as a permanent position. I just wanted to know the qualifications of prior candidates that we had appointed for this position. Did it include human resources experience?
The first appointment in 2011 did ask for HR experience. That person lasted a year and I can't recall in 2012, that also included HR experience.
Did that happen to be the case in that appointment?
The first person.
The second? Was there HR experience?
No. I mean, other than being building principal and being responsible for special education, there's no formal HR experience.
I see. Okay. So, that's something that we need to change when we post this permanent position to look for HR experience.
Yes.
Am I correct with that? My other concern is knowing of the resignation and of the vacancy, the recommendation made to the Board of Education occurred today at 2:30 in the afternoon. So, I feel that is rushing the process. Nothing against individuals recommended whatsoever, but I feel with something that's important, our policy states that we have these items posted to our agenda a certain number of days in advance, which would have put us back to Thursday. You know, we had our agenda meeting and set agenda knowing that this is going to be a possibility and did not hear anything at all today.
Just to follow up on that, during the agenda setting meeting, did I misunderstand whenever I met with you and met that it would be okay to move forward with an interim appointment for HR? I thought I understood you meant that I shouldn't move forward.
You will be interviewing individuals and getting back to the board, just like that was I understand.
Yes, I completed the last one this morning.
So, just, you know, I am concerned about the timetable, that the board did not have time to receive responses to questions, did not, you know, have the information until, you know, this evening. And it's part of why, you know, we spent a lot of time upstairs. We really need to be in compliance with our policy in terms of, you know, the schedule following the timetable. I do have concerns about that. We do need to expedite the process of appointing a permanent person to fill this position. As my colleagues agree, this is a very critical position in our district. I am also concerned about some of what was brought up in terms of, without names mentioned, the rest of the staffing deficiency that is in this area. And that almost seems to be more urgent than, you know, the HR leadership position because, you know, people's payroll needs to happen on time and there should be, you know, issues with that and financial repercussions to many employees. So, we really encourage quick, swift action in terms of, you know, you mentioned positive consulting firm to take over payroll, you know, management for a period of time or one thing or another, dealing with the different unions involved, different court. I am concerned about that and I would like this expedited and taken care of, so that speech I can never have. But I see those two as two very different issues because, you know, the position that's becoming vacant that we're voting on is different from, you know, that risk that you explained. And that's my part. Thank you. Mr. Schaffier?
I call for a question. And this is more discussion. I'm sorry. But I just, in terms of informing our employees and our retirees, it's incumbent upon me to notify them electronically, perhaps by email if they don't have an email account, that as of July 19th, there will not be any employees at all at the HR due to the vacancies.
What are we doing for the other vacancies of who handles the payroll? I mean, how are we supposing we're gonna, you know, have one of our principals coming to care of payroll? I don't see that happening.
There will not be anybody to answer questions so that person could try to answer for them. I think it's important that people know that.
The payroll must go on. I mean, I'm very alarmed that we're tying two things that are not related here. The payroll must go on. This is an emergency situation. We find ourselves with an empty office that needed to be handled and, you know, resolved. It's an emergency and it's not related to this vote. Somebody answered questions, you know, a superintendent can answer questions, you know, with assistance of the rest of the staff, but who's handling payroll? That's other people that need to be addressed very quickly.
Correct.
Thank you. If, any other comments, any other questions?
Yes. This is a very important position. As a matter of fact, you really have to know something about employee benefits, insurance, all those different things. And the person who goes in there, okay, has to be up to standard at that point. What you seem to be really saying here is you're going to put a body in to that position who knows really nothing about it, has had no experience in that area. What do you get out of it? Okay? It really means that you have to come in and, you know, put out a paper to get a good human resources person who went to school for that position. Okay? You didn't go to school to become a teacher, you didn't take courses for administration. You know all of the benefits and everything else and I'm quite sure that the unions would be really upset if you put someone in there and all of a sudden on the first payday, you had a screw up and your, you know, teacher was getting, you know, less money or more money and so forth. I think it's incumbent that the school board take the opportunity and time, okay, to get someone in there who's going to do it. As far as the office being closed, that's really an intimidation in a sense. Dr. Adams, with all due respect, I believe that you have to really know the situation and make sure that everything still goes on in that office as much as possible. Okay? There are firms out there that basically you can go to and hire, okay, people with human resource experience who wants it for two months or three months or whatever the case may be. But just simply to put someone in there, okay, doesn't make sense at this point in time.
Okay.
Just one other point.
Sorry. Ms. Reamer, sorry. I do think it's very important that there's somebody covering the HR office where you can get clerks, as what Don was saying. I think that it's very important to have somebody in there that can answer the questions. I don't think that the department head is necessary for the actual work that needs to get done, that part, clerk type of work that needs to be completed.
Mr. McHensy?
I think also this has been an issue in the last few years in terms of hiring. Personnel has been one of the hot button issues in this particular district. And if we don't give it its due diligence and we don't encourage people from both outside and inside, get the most qualified candidate. I'm mostly concerned about the optics of hiring an interim. Again, it's no reflection on the person who was nominated for that position is 100%. I think that person's a fantastic educator, I think he's a fantastic leader. It has to do with putting a mentor in there and how that looks to the upcoming leaders.
Thank you. Mr. Curran, any further comments? Mr. Dowling? Everybody's good. We will take action on this side. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, they are on...
2.01, 2.03.
So, we're doing them together?
Together. Yeah. There's one independent company, yes. All those in favor, and we need to do the count. Mr. Curran, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dowling and Mr. Schaffier. Ms. Reamer? Name. Mr. McHensy? High esteem?
No.
No Karen's name? Those two items, yeah. Just in summary, to clarify where this board, I think, stands is we all agree on this being a very significant position in our district that needs to be filled as soon as possible. I believe the full board agreed on posting it externally and internally and seeing what pool of candidates we received. And human resources experience would be extremely beneficial to our district and our administration as a whole. The more junior positions that are vacant simultaneously somehow, they're all vacant at the same time, are probably even more urgent so that payroll is not stalled or delayed and there are no errors. And we are going to do our due diligence, even if it takes a special meeting to meet sooner than, you know, the next month's scheduled meeting to resolve this and to get this figured out. Thank you, everybody. And I want to add that, you know, I know some of my colleagues put out their feelings about the individual nominated. I didn't, it was the same recommendations and praise because I felt this was more executive material, but I don't think we disagree here or anyone disagrees at this table that that person is a rock star, a great leader in our district and we consider him extremely highly by the same token. We have concerns over his something and his, you know, students also missing his leadership, his amazing leadership in the district. So, I want to make that very clear. There's nothing individually, you know, been pointed here as a problem. It was a constant discussion more than a principal discussion, not per se an individual. We think very highly of that person. Moving forward, our next segment is public participation on agenda items. Based upon Board of Education policy 1230, this is public participation which does not exceed three minutes per person, does not exceed 30 minutes overall. There is no discussion of specific concerns regarding individual district personnel or particular students that is allowed in this period of discussion. I'm sorry, public participation. It should present comments, concerns to the superintendent if they are related to personnel or students directly to the superintendent of schools during regular business hours. Your remarks, on the other hand, are welcome and appreciated and we are listening to them.
I'll play with information. I thought we agreed to do away with the three-minute.
Yeah, I did ask for the clock to go away. If you could keep the time without the clock, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Rizan. So, we open the microphone for public participation.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Matt Raichner, a current senior on the cross country team. This is my fourth year of cross country at the high school. The three previous seasons were under the guidance and coaching of Joe Biddy. Today, I'm here to defend Coach Biddy, who has wrongfully been denied a chance to finish his distinguished coaching career on his own terms. If he coached this season, he would reach his 50th as the suffered head coach previously under a different composition of board members. The board chose to conduct a vote on the status of the cross country coach and they made the choice to put one coach in charge of maintaining the safety of two teams. Coach Biddy has expressed his concerns that this would hamper the quality of coaching and safety of both the boys' and girls' teams. This vote was held despite events out prior from the public as well as members of the board. For example, Dr. DeDag was vehement in her objection to holding the vote with the whole board in place. Over the past two seasons, Coach Biddy has been an excellent motivator and messenger for all his efforts, using his words to help us achieve our goals. His classic three Cs of consistency, commitment, and competitiveness is a superb model for cross country runners that has helped propel teams to success. I implore you as a school board of respected school district to reconsider the... I implore you as a school board of a respected school district to reconsider the decisions made by the whole board and deal with the cross country team and the public thinks is right. And that is to bring back the winningest coach in New York state history, Joe Biddy, for another season. Thank you and have a good night.
Can you give me your last name one more time, please?
Rechner, Ari Thaiss, engineer.
And thank you very much for your comments.
No problem. Thank you.
My name is Wes Collins and I am making do this tonight, but on paper, so this is coming. Cheers from the heart, just allow. Today, I just want to take back, tell you a story about what Mr. Biddy has done for me. It was my freshman year. I'm coming into cross country, I don't know anything was going on, it's the second day. We do a quick two and a half mile run and after that, I'm just kind of dying, don't want to do this anymore, it's just too far for me. Then all of a sudden I hear Biddy saying, all right, gather around, we're gonna talk. He says, where's Collins? He says, oh, let's see, your brother, I remember your brother. Couldn't even get past the parking lot, the home course. But now, he was late, senior college, now he's running fourteen thirties, five days. And that stuck with me. Not only did I know that he still cares about the athletes that he has in the past, he still is up to date and knows what's going on in their lives. He's also, it also shows that he is show up and push them towards the greatness that they become. And I took that to heart and I pushed myself to be just like my brother, even better than my brother, under the guidance of Coach Biddy. And he's just pushed me and he's been by my side, helping me get through it. Some days, I just don't want to do it, I'm just not into it, but he just motivates me and says, you can do it, you got it, I know, I know what's in you, I believe you have helped lead this team to the greatness that it can be. And that's what's helped me push through and become just a great runner I am today. So, thank you and just please help reconsider, bring this big man back to embrace lives. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, thank you for attending and thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Melissa Estrelardi, I have two children in the district currently, but going into the middle school. I just want to say that now that we have our new board members who have pledged to put kids first, I'm asking of the DOE as a whole, order a full and independent investigation into a situation that seems to have been willfully and purposely ignored for almost a year. It's well known by now that there are many reports of students being bullied at one of our elementary schools. And evidence has been presented in the media that two administrators, one named Dastic coordinators for the school and the other named Dastic coordinator for the district, not only failed to help this child, but may have actually participated in stonewalling his parents and covering up the incident. In addition, there is also evidence that these two district employees were engaged in inappropriate relationship as supervisor and supportmen. To be clear, I could care less what consulting adults do behind closed doors, but in this case, an investigation is needed to ascertain what, if any, part of that personal relationship contributed to the district's lack of action to resolve this issue and to inform new policy that would ensure the health and well being of all of our students in the interim.
Thank you, Ms. Estrelardi, for attending and for your comments.
My name is Michelle Romatell, I'm a suffragette for graduate and I live in suffering. Welcome to us new school board members. Kids first, I love what you stand for, I hope you keep your promise and keep and put kids first. This was not done for our last school board when it came to a ten-year-old boy with disabilities who we let him sleep, was bullied, and told to kill himself and had it doing. Previous school board did nothing about it, even after numerous times the father of this child stood up and asked the board for help. I have witnessed firsthand what this little boy has gone through the last two years and how much has changed as a result of it and it's very heartbreaking. As I've said before, you don't have to like the parents, but this little boy should have been protected regardless and this district failed him. No child should have to be moved to a different school to feel safe. I'm a concerned taxpayer and I'm also a proud family friend of this family. I'm requesting that you investigate all that was allowed to happen to this child when this child was in wide, this child was not protected. I'm also requesting that you investigate why the school board protected the principal and the deputy superintendent when proof was shown of their relationship, which I believe is a construct of interest as per the district's own policy, which I gave you a copy of. I would also like to ask the board to look into the countless things that were done to this child. The parents have so many emails and so many foils to prove that all this was happening to their son and nothing was done by the district to protect him or to help the parents. No parent should have to go through what they've been going through and still are just to be heard. I too have sent emails to no, and no responses, you now have copies of. We pay enough taxes and for a school district to now be sued because they didn't protect a child is concerning. Please investigate and let this evidence speak for itself. At the last school board meeting, the school that this little boy was bullied at requested forty-five hundred dollars for an energy bus program. This program is to help overcome negativity and create a positive culture. The principal of this school did nothing for this child with disabilities. This principal continues to tweet about how positive and perfect her school is, but that's true, that only furthers, proves, further proves that there was no regard in this little boy's life and what happened to him is so far from positive. I request that you put a whole $4,500 energy bus and to actually investigate what happened to this child. I'm glad to hear that the other schools in this district did buy into this program as stated at the last meeting. Why pay all this money for something that should just be done naturally? This child fears going to middle school because he's still being bullied by the same students. The parents asked the district to address it and they haven't even gotten a response to it yet.
Thank you, Convo.
This little boy with disabilities was the only one to have consequences and he has, and he was the only one being bullied. Why only him and not the ones that bullied him and the administration did nothing? Please do the right thing, let's stop protecting the adults and covering up what has been done. It doesn't matter if the deputy superintendent resigns, it doesn't change all that happened and that was allowed to happen to this little boy. It also doesn't change the fact that neither the deputy superintendent or the principal had been held accountable for what has been done.
Thank you very much, Chris.
This should have been investigated and held accountable for months, especially now since we have more proof in his own words, his welcoming letter to his new school, calling the principal, his significant other. I gave you a copy of that.
Thank you. I must ask you to conclude. Thank you. Thank you all. Any further comments?
Hello, my name is Andrew Dale. This is very brief. I know that, I actually have two different school boards, two school boards. I know that in previous meetings, there was a coach that was hired for two positions, for the boys, for the girls, for the cross country, track coach. The question I have is, or the point that I'd like to make is, the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, along with the regulations of the Commission on Education, clearly states that teams organized for one gender, they only practice and compete against teams of that same gender. So if that's the case, I don't know how you're going to be able to have a coach that's going to be able to be able to coach and practice with the boys team and the girls team at the same time. Or if you're going to try and split it up, it's got to be split right down the middle because then you fall into Title IX. Title IX being, you know, the boys and the girls not having proper representation between both of them. For those track coaches, parents that are here, the US Department of Education Office for Civil Rights, they take complaints just like this. And there's cases out there that shows that this really is going to be a major problem in the school district if they don't handle it. I would ask that the school district takes a really good, hard look at this because when complaints start coming down from the, you know, complaints do start coming down from the Office of Civil Rights, it's going to be very difficult to explain that this information has already been put out to you and there's been absolutely no change. So, thank you for your time.
Mr. Dale, any free comments? Any further comments? I don't see any further speakers. We proposed a segment of the agenda and moving on to superintendent closing comments.
No.
Thank you. I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do we have a motion?
No.
Mr. Curran, second. Mr. Mackenzie, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.